City Council meeting for the city of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kurt Krespin. It's we've had so many different things happening in the city of Lamar, you know, it's just a busy time and now that we're approaching the holiday season, I'm sure it's going to even be more busy. But I wanted to welcome you all and thank you for joining us. One of the items that I really wanted to take a moment to speak about before our meeting is that this past weekend, the Lamar Thunder volleyball team did a wonderful, amazing job representing us at state, uh, the state tournament. Um, it was a heartbreaking loss, but you know, I just really wanted to give them kudos and, and thank them and congratulate them for such a great season that they had. They did a wonderful job representing us and we can't thank them enough. So with that said, I know we do have a fairly busy agenda tonight with a lot of different items, so I'm going to move into the meeting directly. We, is Travis Ford here tonight? Travis? I didn't see you back there. We'll start with the invocation with Travis Ford. Travis?
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I just asked that you would guide our, uh, city council members this evening, that you'd give them wisdom as they make decisions that affect many other people in our community and be with those that are speaking, that are community members, that may be concerned about something or have a opinion on something. Just pray we have a, a spirit of unity, God, and this time of Thanksgiving, this month, Lord, I pray that we'd be thankful for what we have and thankful for the city that we live in, that does have many great amenities for the size of our city, Lord, and that we'd be thankful for that and that we'd think of those that are less fortunate than many of us and we'd look for ways, uh, to help those that are less fortunate this, uh, this time of year. Again, I just ask that you would be with everything that's said and done this evening in the meeting and ask all these things in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Mike Duffy, would you lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Looks like we're about ready. So, um, the time is now seven oh six P M. We'll call the meeting. Order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mike Bellamy.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Krespin.
Here.
Mike Duffy.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Anne Marie Crampton.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Swartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, uh, we've all, we do have the consent agenda in front of us. It looks like we do have one item to separate out from the bills, which is Gonzalez Unlimited on page fourteen. That would be item number nine, five, one, three, three, uh, four. So we have the total there, three thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. So we'll separate that out from the consent agenda and vote on that separate. Do we have any other changes or modifications for the consent agenda?
Emma, we approve the consent agenda, uh, last check number nine, five, one, three, three.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with subtracting nine, five, one, three, three for Gonzalez Unlimited. Any final questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Now we just need a motion to, uh, approve the bill payment for nine, five, one, three, three.
Sell move.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for bill number nine, five, one, three, three to Gonzalez Unlimited in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight and forty cents. Do we have any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify with an, oh.
Just an I.
Signify with an I. Don't vote on the machine.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay.
Councilman.
Gonzalez sustaining.
Gonzalez sustaining.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comments. This is for audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council if they'd like to have more time. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the city treasurer's report.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
All right. No report from the city treasurer, so we'll move on to the city clerk's report.
Our September sales and use tax collected down October was four hundred, forty-eight thousand, seventy dollars and sixty-nine cents, which is up twelve point fourteen percent or forty-eight thousand, five hundred, eleven dollars and forty-seven cents from twenty-twenty-one. Our year-to-date collections were four million, one hundred, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents, which is up three point twenty-six percent or a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred, ninety-five dollars and five cents from twenty-twenty-one. And that's all we have.
Okay. Um, just to clarify, it looks like I may have, I thought the second, reading of the second ordinance was in with consent agenda, but it hasn't separated out. It was in with consent agenda though, wasn't it?
It, it is, but we don't, she always puts a.
There's a separate item. Okay, I wanted to make sure I didn't skip it.
In case we wish to pull it.
Okay. So we did not pull that separate. Okay. Thank you very much, Linda, for the city clerk's report. It's good to see us having a little bit of an increase going at the end of the year. Next item on the agenda is the city administrator's report. Rob?
Hey, um, I know last, uh, meeting I teased you with, uh, the projects and some of the great things our guys in public works been doing. So I'm gonna let him get up and give you a little review about how all of our hardworking guys down there and girls.
Great. Pat Mason.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Ben, I, I gotta admit, I went a little longer than the last quarter. This is probably the last half of the year here, so, but we've got a lot done. So, but that being said, you know, we've battled against staffing shortages and supply chain issues, increased some material costs, you know, one of the things that I was a little disappointed about, we didn't get as far with paving as I'd hoped we would, but we suffered about a twenty-five percent increase in the cost of the asphalt about the time we started to put the asphalt down. So at any rate, we did still, I feel like, got quite a bit done, all things considered. So, uh, another thing, you know, staffing shortages, I gotta hand it to my staff. They pulled together and we, as a, as an overall department, we pulled together as a team and filled some of the gaps and holes and got a lot done despite being shorthanded. At one time, we were down eight positions across all of public works. So I'm, I'm happy to report today. I think we've got all those back, but two, one of them is actually the deputy public works director's position that I chose not to fill till after the first of the year. So, and the other is one position in the water, wastewater department. So we're looking for a CDL driver and they're, they're hard to find. So, uh, so we were able to mill and overlay various city streets using approximately thirty-four-hundred ton of asphalt. Crews were able to complete construction of Sword Street and Anderson Street, both. I mean, I know Sword Street, we started last year and did about half of it, and the other half we completed this year for the cobblestone project. Last year it was the coffee shop. Uh, oh, about two thousand linear feet of curb and gutter were built this year. And one thing I, I put, I think there's thirteen, fourteen photos in there, just of various projects, you know, that I thought it'd give you an idea of, you know, just kind of going through some of the curb and gutter work and paving work and different pictures. But one thing I did put in there was a map. And I wanted to talk about that just for a little bit. I cheated. My map's just a little bit bigger than yours. I apologize for the size, but the only way to get the real, to really wrap your head around this is to look at an eight-foot map on the wall and you can really see what's going on. The thing I wanted to point out is down here at the bottom, you can see that in two thousand and thirteen, we started tracking, we literally went through and did a survey of every street in town and, and scored it more or less from poor to good or new. So in two thousand and thirteen, if you looked at the poor category, there were twelve point nine-three miles. If you go to, this is actually last year's, I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to update this year's map yet, but we will. But in two thousand and twenty-one, if you look at the poor category, it's down to one percent. So, now that doesn't mean every street in town is great, because if you go to look at fair, you know, some of them, we've even decreased the fair category, but if you look at good, in two thousand and thirteen, it was eight point three-two miles. If you look at good, this last year, it was thirty point four-six miles. So we're making progress. So anyway, I, I appreciate all the council's support with the funding since two thousand and thirteen. I think we've put together a plan that's really working and it's starting to show and we're getting there. So I did add a list of the streets that we did get to this year, and it was North Tenth Street from the railroad tracks to Poplar, West Maple from Tenth to Eleventh, South Tenth from Parmenter to Pearl, South Fifth from Parmenter to Pearl, Second Street from Olive to the railroad tracks, East Maple from Main Street to Sandoval Lane, Sword Street, and of course, Anderson Street. One of these streets, I believe it was South Tenth from Parmenter to Pearl, we milled it, then we realized that the base wouldn't support the equipment, so we had to go in and take that one down about eighteen inches deep and completely replace the road base under it. So it was more or less a complete rebuild of that block. So, and moving on to water wastewater, work is continued on the East Washington Street Drainage Project. Currently, we've installed the twenty-four-inch pipe all, down all of Fourth Street, really, and that's from Washington South to Maple. And then this week, I expect them to finish. There's a block of Sherman that we're working in right now and we should be complete with that pipe installation. And then that'll leave us one block on Washington Street. So I'm pretty confident at this point in time, barring any unexpected occurrences, that we should be able to finish that by the end of December.
Great.
So basically, that project will enhance storm drainage in the areas of East Maple and along North Fourth Street, Main and Washington and Main and Sherman Street. Plans are, of course, like I said, hopefully we'll finish it up and we'll get to try it out next spring when the first rains hit. Also, work has been ongoing on water wastewater, a master plan. Plan outlines and prioritizes a list of critical infrastructure products, projects, including wastewater treatment facility, transmission service line upgrades, drinking water improved, and drinking water improvements. The plan also includes an independent rate study and funding alternatives. And there again, we're hoping to have that to you, the council, to take a look at and approve it sometime next month. The draft is complete. I think they've, they're taking one more look at it. I think we're supposed to get it here in the next week or so. Pretty excited. That's been an all-year-long project, actually, that we've worked on and staff has got a lot of time invested in that. So.
Are we gonna have a work session that we can sit down and?
Yes. In fact, I believe Rob's got some dates that we're working on right now to try to get him in here in the next work session that we can and spend some time going over.
Thank you.
So moving on to the airport, and there again, we've been working on a master plan for the airport as well. It is complete. The FAA currently has it and they're reviewing it. I'm hoping that we get it sometime in the near future here as well, so that we can go to work on it. But it also looks at basically a, a funding path for projects out there like Taxi, the Taxiway A project that we've been working on a little bit. I think last year, we did a little, like, maybe a thousand foot of that and replaced it with some of our entitlement funding. One thing we did get this year, council just approved it actually, it was the last meeting where we got a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant from CDOT Aeronautics, a discretionary grant, to cover the remainder of the design work on it. So it doesn't include construction, but at least we'll get ahead of the game here a little bit and get the design work done on it. And then twenty-twenty-four, we'll be able to start construction on the remainder of the taxiway reconstruction. So self-serve fuel's getting a little closer to reality and all the materials are here, believe it or not, we got everything. We're just waiting on the final approval from the state for our permit to have it. And I'm hoping by the end of next month, planes will be able to pull up and put their credit card in and fuel themselves. So with that being said, that's about all I've got.
You're saying that by, by next year, they should be able to utilize that?
I'm hoping by the end of next month, we should have it. I think it's going to be a pretty simple installation as far as that goes. So, but yeah, for sure, by next year, we'll be able to have self, offer self-serve fuel for the hundred low lead, which is the smaller planes. It doesn't include jet fueling. We'll still have to fuel the jet fueling.
Well, I think it's always important, in my opinion, for our community to understand that, you know, nothing really happens too fast in the city because we have to dot all the i's and cross all the t's and make sure we do it all properly and fund it and get the grants and resources. And, uh, those master plans, similar to our wastewater, water master plan, that's huge, a huge benefit for us to move forward and gives us a guideline on how we can do these projects. The same with the airport master plan. Taking over the airport was a huge undertaking for public works, so I thank you for taking that over. I know that's a big job. Um, but the Southeast Colorado Regional Airport is just a big part of our future as we grow and it's desperately going to be needed in the future, I think. And as far as the street department is concerned, I really like that map. Um, I, it's almost a weekly occurrence where people are asking me about one street or another and what are they going to fix this street or that street? Um, this basically is showing us a ten-year, almost a ten-year cycle of what you're doing, um, of something that we started in two thousand and thirteen. So I really like this map. I don't know if there's a way to share it on our website as far as what we do on the public work site for addressing the streets, but I really like that, that information. And it'd be great to share that with the public so they could see what kind, how large of steps you've made over the last ten years as far as improving that. Because I, I remember in two thousand and thirteen, we had the discussion about the streets and that's when we started to change that and put that into a cycle. And it's really made a huge difference, I think, in the city streets. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council for Pat, before he goes?
Our, our well water levels are good till spring?
Well, waters, well, it's looking great. I think at our last water board meeting, we talked a little bit about well levels. So surprisingly, we have some wells that are up a little. I mean, nothing's drastic, but there may be a few that are just down just a hair from where we were last year, but overall, we're up actually a little bit in all of our well levels. So I'm feeling pretty comfortable going into the next watering season here anyhow, but need to keep praying for some moisture though.
Yeah.
Always take all the snow and rain. So.
Great.
Got a question. I noticed your guys was out working in the blizzard we just had this morning. Um, her, do you, uh, put out some kind of a class or training to bring to the forehead of your employees, you know, for hydration even in the wintertime, cold weather gear, these types of things?
Yeah. We annually, about this time of year, a little earlier actually in October, we'll put together a little training for street department employees where we talk about, number one, the snow routes. It's a three-tiered system where you got your, you know, priority one, two, and threes. You know, obviously priority one be the fire department, hospital, some of those things. So we go over that kind of stuff. We'll also go over how to chain a truck up. You know, there's times when we get enough snow where you gotta put the chains on. So we'll go over that and talk a little bit about, you know, if we have to go to twelve-hour shifts, like I've seen us have to do before down here for many, many days to get things done, that you gotta take into consideration food and drink and proper clothing, dry clothes, and some things that you might want to just have with you this time of year in your truck or whatever. Never know. So, yeah, we do kind of go over those kind of things.
Perfect. Thank you.
Safety's important.
Right. Yeah. You know, Rob keeps saying he hopes he sees this much. I said, well, you know, you see one of those, you won't ever want to go through one again. I told him, next time we get one, I wouldn't be sure I'm sitting in my living room with a cup of coffee watching it. So.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Rob, we'll go back to the city administrator with the rest of his report.
Yes, sir. Uh, the public library, uh, the food drive will still be going on till December seventeenth, and we're going to be donating that to the Sparrow House Ministries. The Domestic Safety Holiday Wonderland, Saturday, uh, November nineteenth, six to nine P M. at the Elks Lodge. There's a tree and wreath auction for Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. Coffee's with Rob. The next two times are, uh, November twentieth and November thirtieth at Dunkin' and Daylight Donuts, and I will be buying donuts this time. So if you show up, not just coffee, you'll get donuts too. So come on down. It's all on me.
Nice.
My, I don't know if my wife's watching right now, but all right. City offices are going to be closed on Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday, twenty-four, twenty-five November. So they're going to get Thanksgiving off. Lamar Public Library's, uh, monthly craft fair and farm market, uh, December the third, uh, nine A M. to one P M. in the cultural events center. Uh, we're gonna now talk about the, uh, location of the council dinner on, uh, December seventh. I know we had said we were gonna have some options and people were thinking about other things and maybe they were gonna come with some good ideas at this one, and I'm willing to execute or use the event center or this council room or whatever you'd like.
Well, I know at one point, we talked about just standardizing it, putting it at the, um, cultural events center, so that way everybody would know exactly where it's at every first Wednesday. But I don't know if that's something we should do or if we should discontinue it altogether or modify it in some way. But, you know, the whole intent of our council breakfast was to give the community yet another way to meet with the council in a open session, open forum, casual atmosphere. But I have to admit, over the last year, there's, I think we've had three people show up out of the whole year, not just out of one instance, but out of the whole year. And, you know, being on the council, being, you know, working our full-time jobs, doing our full-time stuff, you know, it's already hard enough to meet all the meetings, much less than add a council breakfast that nobody shows up to. So it's always a challenge, and I'm not sure what the council direction would like to be for December, much less than for next year, but it's definitely something we should probably look at. Is there any ideas for something different? Um, anybody? I know there was a time when we had discussed even doing just a once-a-month town hall meeting, but I'm afraid that's going to be similar where nobody shows up. So, council?
Well, you mentioned the cultural events there. Can we keep it simple? Not serve any food, but maybe just cookies and some tea and, and so forth, and just let people, you know, visit with us at that moment?
Could you coffee and cookies and?
I've got big coffee machines and we can definitely go get cookies. Safely make some good ones, too.
Yeah. Either at the cultural events or the library or someplace that would be neutral.
You, you don't know, also is a, like a come and go type of thing, not necessarily have to.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just thought maybe if we did it in one, we wanted to support the businesses by going from business to business, but, um, you know, maybe having it in one location may make it easier for people to remember, oh, I know where it's at exactly, rather than trying to hunt down where the council is this month.
And I do have, we have at least one new partner that has said that they would like for us to go out there, the TA Center.
Yeah.
Well, for, let's start with the first question, which is December. Do you want to do a dinner-type thing or do you want to keep it as a breakfast? And I guess we could go to Dunkin' and do it at Dunkin's since TA offered to host us there. Um, any suggestions?
Or we could just skip it since it's December and there's lots of other things to do.
We could. Anybody else?
I think we should skip it for December and go into January.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm open either way, whether we skip it or, or schedule it.
I'd like to go have a donut at Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
Rob, I say we, we start in January.
Come on Wednesday, I'll buy.
I, I'll go either way. I know TA especially is very gung-ho and positive for Lamar.
They really are.
They're on fire.
Support them, even if nobody from the public shows up.
Twenty-twenty-three gung-ho New Years at, um, TA.
At TA.
That's good. I will go ahead and, I will go ahead and schedule it then.
So we'll skip December's and we'll start in January.
But just so you know, on December seventh, I plan on being there. That's a special day for me and for a lot of, but I'll, I will have a, a day for anybody who wants to show up on December seventh as well.
In addition to, right?
In addition to.
So you're gonna be there for?
Yeah, well.
Rob, coffee with Rob anyhow with that?
Yep.
So I may show up with you.
On December seventh?
December seventh. It's an easy day to remember.
I'd also make the suggestion that, uh, Quentin, who's one of the, the owner, the owner of operation, that he come in from Vegas.
I will, I will contact him tomorrow.
Specifically.
Okay. All right. Well, that sounds like we have a schedule there. We're going to skip the council breakfast for December. We'll start strong in January. The first Wednesday of January at Dunkin' Donuts, we'll start strong and, um, go from there.
Did you just also sort of go the same way for the meals? Because we'd gone from breakfast to maybe having more of a, an order of type meals. We're gonna do those once a quarter, but they haven't had, it's been about the same success.
Yeah. I'd say probably just.
Reevaluate.
I think we, after the January one, we just moved to the cultural events center and just start doing the coffee and.
Okay.
Cookies. Okay.
Okay. And, uh, I guess that also brings up, uh, another meeting question, and that is, um, in December sometimes, because it's so close to the Christmas holidays, you can either move it or just not have the second meeting. And if we can authorize, pay the bills and everything like that, like last year, I think we.
We're gonna be closed.
Yeah. So we want to move it or just go ahead and keep it, not have a meeting?
I guess the question is be the end of the year, will you be able to do that all by the fifth?
If you can authorize me to go ahead and pay the payment of bills.
Okay.
That are due end of the month. We'll have one on the, what is it, the twelfth?
We'd have a council meeting on the twelfth of December and skip the twenty-sixth, which is the day after.
There are sometimes bills that I can't avoid paying at the end of the month. So.
We can bring that up.
You can get them all in by December twelfth?
I don't.
You don't?
But, but we did last, we just put them on that next agenda.
For January? Okay. What would you like to do? Skip the second meeting?
I think that'd probably be wise.
It's fine.
And then we'll be meeting January the ninth, is that correct?
Yeah.
If staff thinks it's, if you can handle it.
If you can make it work, that.
We did the same thing once to you. So we just, you gave me, I get what I need.
Okay. As long as it works for you, then we'll make that work. Cause I know a lot of people will be leaving after Christmas time, so we may have short staff or, so, all right. We will plan to skip the set, the last meeting of the year.
Okay. Um, and a projects update, even though Pat gave you a, a little idea about we'd, you know, you heard that the Washington Street Drainage Project is getting much closer, and I know that'll help, uh, been a long, long time, but, uh, we've done a, a little bit of planning. I know that we've, you know, continued our, looking forward to pickleball courts and several other issues, and I think that we're going to have, uh, a lot of success. And I, I just want people out there who wonder when we're gonna do it. It's still in the process. It hasn't been forgotten and we are working on it. So.
Okay.
And that's all I have unless you just have other questions.
About the drinking ban?
Ah, we, we did get one in before we got the money from the school. The school did do a, uh, funds drive and we haven't received anything back in for the second one. So we put one in anyway, and we're waiting for their half to put in the, the next one. So they were, they were, from what I understand, said it was a great success. They were able to fill their bottles much quicker and it, and it helped out.
Good.
Okay. Great.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Is there a timeline on the charge point station to be?
They're working on it right now, but no, I do not have the, the final date. I know that we just, uh, we had some questions on those today and I did, he said he was gonna be able to contact me tomorrow. By the time I got ahold of them, they were not available to answer the questions. So I will have some answers tomorrow.
And I know there was some questions about why are we adding additional chargers? Uh, these are a different style of chargers. Uh, there are the CCS two and the Chadmo-type style of, uh, chargers. And what the reasoning for this is because, um, newer pickups and newer cars such as the new Cadillacs and G M's and Silverado, the Ford F-150, all of those use a CCS charger or a Chadmo, mainly the CCS charger. So this will allow us to serve all the different types of E V chargers. I think it's been pretty successful. And talking to Tesla, they're already up to three hundred charges per, you know, charging sessions per month. Um, and it just continues to climb. So I think we're just wanting to make sure that we have the full range for anybody that's traveling through the city of Lamar.
Along, along those lines, what's the usage of the present charging stations? Have we seen quite a bit of use?
Well, well, that's what I was just saying. They said three hundred charging sessions.
Three hundred charging stations, okay.
In a month for the last month. So.
Sorry.
It's okay. It started off, the first month was like fifty, and then it's slowly moved up. So now it's around the three hundred range. So three hundred visits.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions for our city administrator before we move on? Seeing none. Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is proclamation number twenty-two oh four, a proclamation declaring the sixteen days between International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November the twenty-fifth and International Human Rights Day on December the twelfth as the sixteen days of activism against gender violence. This was initiated by the Zonta Club of Prowers County, and it looks like we have some visitors to attend these nights. So I'll, turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I have a list, actually, of all the events that we have planned for the sixteen days from the twenty-fifth of November till December tenth, if you. from the twenty-fifth of November till December tenth, if you'd like. Sure?
Sure.
Thank you. So you'll notice that we added a bunch of things. And we have something going on each day of the sixteen days, beginning on the twenty-fifth of November. One big thing that we started last year that we thought was quite successful was the red sand project. We involved several of the school, high school, student clubs and community members, Zonchins, all kinds of people were out there pouring sand into the cracks of the sidewalks. We want to change the location a little bit this year and do the, in front of the buildings, the, the main stores. So we want to shift it a little bit south of where we did it last year. But still around the community building, around this building and around the courthouse. So the students researched statistics about human trafficking and health numbers and things like that that people can call, people, contact points for people who are in trafficking situations or abusive situations, so that they can call out for help. And they write those on, in chalk on the sidewalks, along with filling the cracks with red sand to connote those people who fall through the cracks of society and fall victim to those kinds of things. That's part of what we're doing.
Okay.
Should I just read the proclamation?
Actually, we can read that.
Okay.
We'll all go ahead and read that for you.
Thank you.
So we just need to go through the proclamation?
Let her read it, your coffee.
Okay. Do better when I'm not, when I'm reading, so. All right, so I'll read through it, if that's okay with you?
That's great.
Proclamation number twenty-two dash oh four, a proclamation declaring the sixteen days between International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November the twenty-fifth and International Human Rights Day on December the tenth as the sixteen days of activism against gender-based violence. Whereas we as citizens of the community recognize the worldwide problems of violence against women occurs even here in Lamar, Colorado. And whereas gender-based violence is traumatic to the body, mind, and spirit, and can prevent people from being fully active participants at home and in the world. And whereas the health of parents and caregivers is critical to the overall health and well-being of their families and the larger community. And whereas gender-based violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court cost, shelters and foster care, sick leaves, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas in spite of some progress, we need only to look towards our newspapers or watch a television newscast to see the unfortunate truth that gender-based violence has not yet been eliminated here in Lamar or around the world. And whereas we support efforts of individuals and joint organizations such as the Zonta Club of Prowers County to raise awareness, stimulate discussion, and advocate for local solutions that'll curb gender-based violence. And whereas these local people join thousands of others from around the world to assert that the right of women and men to be free of violence is a fundamental human right. And then it goes into the now therefore, but before I say that, can we, would the council like to vote on that? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Kamri?
Unanimous in favor of?
So now I'll finish up with now therefore. I, Mayor Kirk Cressman, by the virtue and authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Lamar, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the sixteen days between International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November the twenty-fifth and the International Human Rights Day on December the tenth as the sixteen days of activism against gender violence. During these sixteen days, all citizens are urged to support efforts to end gender violence and to eliminate the detrimental consequences gender violence has on the well-being of our community. I will sign that off. May I use your pen? In witness hereof, whereof, I have unto set my hand and cause to be affixed on the official seal of the city of Lamar this fourteenth day of November, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Copy if you need that. All right, well, thank you very much for your efforts, and we hope that you have a great event for the sixteen days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you need anything on that red sand days, please let us know, and I know last year, I think it was last year that I attended, maybe it might have been the first year. So, help participate. All right, the next item on the agenda, moving on, is to accept the city of Lamar's twenty twenty-three optional coverage quotes and certificates of insurance renewal. This was initiated by Margaret Saldana, our HR director, and Rob Evans, our city administrator.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This renewal quote is something we do annually. Just to let you know, on the second page, you'll see there's two things that actually went up. And one is our equipment breakdown. We had, the premium's gonna go up slightly, not, not a huge amount. And because of the larger amount of claims, it's no fault for sewer breakdowns and things like that, where we have no fault insurance, we're gonna, we're gonna go up one level to the option three, where we're gonna be able to give a little bit more relief to some, for if we're not considered liable by the city, we still want to help them out because of the things that happen to them, and you know, it's not their fault either.
Okay.
And we just recommend that we accept the new rates.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the new rates. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Agenda item number three. Authorization to continue participation in the ten thirty-three program for surplus equipment. This is initiated by Chief Kyle Miller. Chief?
Good evening. Presidential Executive Order fourteen zero seven four was passed this year, or ordered this year. And it requires us, any entity wishing to participate in the ten thirty-three program to receive authorization from their community governing board, the council, to continue the participation in this, this program. We've been in it since, I believe, two thousand eight. We get surplus inventory from the military to utilize. The, the big thing this year is the controlled equipment, so armored vehicles, weapons, and trying to get a helicopter, but I don't know if I'm gonna get that done. There's a lot of things on there that we'll never use here that they're now, they're more regulated than they were before. But one of the things is, we have to, we have to state every year the federal fiscal year that we are, I have permission from the council to apply or participate in this program, so that's what I'm asking for tonight, is just permission to continue participating in the ten thirty-three program.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Who's gonna fly the helicopter? Not at our airport, correct?
Well, I don't need an airport if I have a helicopter.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the continued participation in the ten thirty-three. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, next item is item number four, agreement for law enforcement and security services for the twenty twenty-two holiday basketball tournament. This is also Chief Kyle Miller, so I'll let you take it over.
Same thing as every year. We'll do the Security Friday and Saturday nights. On Friday night, it'll be from eight PM to eleven PM, and then on Saturday, it'll be from seven PM to eleven PM. Forty dollars per officer, per hour. So the first night will be three, second night will be four hours. It's two officers each night.
Usually no problem staffing it?
No, no. This is bad good money. Forty dollars an hour is fairly decent money for you.
Can you review the contract there?
I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. Making sure the attorney look.
I move, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve law enforcement. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number five, move forward on rezoning of property at seven hundred East Parmenter from M dash H to R dash two, which is mobile home to residential. This was initiated by Craig Brooks, but also with Rob Evans, so Rob, I'll let you take over.
Yes, sir. So you guys remember the, the next set of ideas and plans by Mr. Hill? And the gated community and the questions that we had, this is the next step in saying that we can now set our hearings and everything we'd have to, to go through the rezoning process, so. All this is, is saying, yes, we can move forward. I know that everybody was supportive, and they thought it was a really good idea, and I think even if you know, you decided not to rezonate later, this would just be the next logical step for you to do.
And what did the planning and zoning say?
They recommended it.
Okay. All right.
So moved.
Got a question. In the discussion at their board meeting, it says there is four mobile homes with three people occupying.
Right.
So those mobile homes gonna be moved off there if it's something's changed?
What's that?
Or are they gonna be grandfathered into state?
They'll be grandfathered in, but right now he's in negotiations to buy all of them out.
So we're not gonna be displacing?
No, we're not gonna move, make anybody move.
Okay.
They're gonna be voluntary.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
The next step for planning and zoning is to have a final development plan committed to them.
Right, he still has to come back with another plan, and then they will, you know, but we can set the, the date for the hearings and stuff before then, but before he would be able to participate, he'd have to have another plan, so.
Okay.
A second.
Who made the motion?
Kamri. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Next item on the agenda is item number six. Approve and sign the twenty twenty-two owner contract agreement for Escondido Soccer Field Score Booth and shelter storage, or structures. This is initiated by Craig Brooks, Kristen Schwartz, and Rob Evans will be speaking on this as well. Rob?
Yes, sir. Spending policies and everything that Kristen will let you know about is bottom minus is a large amount of money. This is the project we tried to bid out twice and couldn't get anybody to bid, so we're
this one?
Oh, well, it came in way too high and we weren't able to accept it, so.
Is there anything different between this bid and the previous bid? As far as the structural differences or anything? I noticed, I didn't see anything about foundation.
It's already been for nineteen thousand dollars worth.
So nothing's different from the first bid, which was way higher than this bid?
Well, the first bid was everything together. It was comprehensive, and so we had to basically figure out how we could do it as a city ourselves. And we're subbing these things out one at a time to get it done.
I noticed Craig is listed on the first occasion.
And I know we scaled it back some, and I don't know what the specifics are. I didn't get it.
The scaling back was the it was related to the scoreboard. They're not getting rid of the scoreboard, but they're gonna build the building first and then get the scoreboard later, so. That's not included in there.
Okay. And of this, we had the fifty, was it fifty thousand from the state bank and eighty thousand contribution from
So there's no plan to eliminate this?
Lopes, running lopes. So the scoreboards are in there with that, or eventually will be done at the next year's?
Yes, sir.
All right, Kristen, did you want to add anything on it, or any questions, concerns, comments?
No, I just wanted to make sure there was a contract with the, it's a local person we haven't worked with before. I wanted to make sure we had a contract before we went forward. And we did go out for bid. The bid came back at like two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Like you said, we split the project up. We've already done the concrete. It was nineteen thousand one hundred for the pad and getting the electrical to the pad. And now we're gonna build the structure. Doing it in pieces.
Okay.
So the contract we're signing here is just gonna be for the hundred and thirty-seven thousand to build the structure.
It's actually, it's actually seventy-four to eighteen seventy-five. It was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars left. I don't know why they put that in there. Because we also have the concrete and the scoreboard, so. But we're doing it in pieces now, so the total of the contract you're approving is seventy-four thousand two hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five.
That's for the building, correct?
Building.
The building is the So what's gonna be the final cost? The estimated final cost when this whole deal's done?
Nineteen one seventy-four thousand, and I don't know what the cost of the actual scoreboard is.
I didn't understand anything you said, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the concrete was nineteen thousand one hundred. This contract is seventy-four to eighteen seventy-five, which would be the building portion of it.
So that's ninety-five?
I don't know what the scoreboards are going to cost. I haven't seen estimates on it.
Originally, they had got, we had our own engineers give us a estimate of cost. And they were hoping to get it at around a hundred thousand. The next time they went back, they said, wow, we missed that by a lot. It wasn't close to what the people came in and bid. And then they had it around a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and the longer we take, those prices are gonna go up. But we just could not spend two hundred and forty on something that we thought was gonna be around a hundred and thousand.
So right now, we're with the concrete already completed, and if we add this contract of seventy-five roughly, we're looking at ninety-five thousand. When we were originally pricing the scoreboards, they were around seventy-five hundred a piece. But I guess that, we'll just have to get the final bids on those once they get them in. But for the wired scoreboard, since it's on the building, they'd be wired, so it's a lot cheaper than trying to do wireless. So that's why there were a little bit less on the scoreboards, but so we're looking at roughly a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen total for everything. Is that a good estimate?
I would say so.
And this is above the cost that was donated to us?
No.
Or the funds that donated to us?
I have fifty thousand from the bank and eighty thousand from the hall that we're spending.
Right now, if we're doing
So there's a hundred and thirty that we received in contributions towards this. And we're gonna spend around a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty. So it'll be under the contributions, is what we're seeing, right?
Yes.
Thank you. And have you looked at that contract?
Yep, it's our standard contract. I don't have any issues with it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Can we go ahead?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Go ahead, Jerry.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the proposed owner contractor agreement and have the mayor sign. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Number seven is approved third amendment to purchase agreement with RB Colorado LLC. This is brought in by myself and city administrator. And Lance Clark has worked on this as well.
If anybody didn't get a copy, I have more of them.
Rob, do you want to start?
Well, as you know, that we, the state got involved and had us have a couple of extra estimates of the land to make sure of of that things weren't infiltrating and a couple of other tests that they wanted to do on the site, so it, it stretched out the timeline. We thought we would have been done at that time and wouldn't have needed anymore, but hopefully this is the last one we have to have.
So I, I had some multiple conversations today, and I can give the council an update, or public the update. I had multiple conversations, as I said, I did talk to PSI Inc., who is performing the environmental assessments for us at that site. You know, this is a project that, I was, a week after I was elected, I reached out to Bob Lash with RB Colorado, and I started talking with him. So this is a three-year project that's been ongoing. We've tried to jump through every hoop and hurdle to get him here and work with him and try to assist him in any way we can. And their intent was to be open by now. But of course, earlier this year, we found out that they needed to do a phase one environmental study, and then the phase one recommended a phase two, and study, and then the phase one recommended a phase two, and then the phase two needed certain characteristics study done on the property. And today, in meeting with PSI, they informed me that the characteristic study and the phase two study, they all matched. They should have the report to us by the end of the day tomorrow, and that'll be the report that they send to the state. Their intention is to, or his, what he stated was, everything looks good as far as moving forward and proceeding with a simple vapor barrier and certain requirements that they need to complete. However, they need to take it to the state and get the final approval. They believe that we'll be able to get, you know, the authorization to be in development with those certain restrictions and move forward, but, you know, of course, the state will have that final say. One caveat that I wanted to throw out to the council and to the community is that even back in, at January of last year, when we first signed this contract, I said we, there's a lot of steps that need to be taken from, you know, signing an intent to purchase and actually breaking the ground and starting the project. And there has been. It's just been an ongoing drug-out process. And so many things have changed. I talked to, I got an email from Bob Lash with RB Colorado today, and he expressed his major concerns with this project. Not only has the time been a problem because it's just drug out so long, but the biggest issue is that with the change of pricing of materials, and then the difficulty of getting a contractor here in Lamar, Colorado, the estimate that he received last year to build this thing was about 1.3 million. The estimate he's just received from one of the same contractor was bumped up to 2.4 million. In a matter of a year, it jumped up over a million dollars in increase. And the majority of that is due to the rising cost of inflation and materials and supply chain issues. So, he's really struggling trying to make this work. We're struggling to try to assist him, but I just want to put it out there that, you know, we're at a critical point, critical juncture, and I don't know which way it's gonna go. So, I want to put that out there as far as a potential. I will meet with him again tomorrow. We're looking at alternate sites. We're looking at alternate solutions. I've also reached out to the local contractors in our area and encouraged them to please put out a bid and get the bid so they don't have to pay that extra amount to, you know, bring in an outside contractor, mobilize and get him here, because that alone added about $500,000 to the project, just to mobilize him to Lamar. So, I've really been pushing our local contractors, trying to get them engaged to help out on this project. I think all of us want to see it happen, but, you know, the potential is still there that the numbers may not work to where we can make this happen. So, I'm keeping the faith. I have my fingers crossed. I'm still working with him. Like I said, I have a conference call with him tomorrow morning, so we'll discuss it more in depth. We'll look at other options and opportunities, but they want to be here, you know, they've, just as well as we've put in the effort, they've put in a lot of effort as well within architecture, design, engineering.
Paper permits.
The paper permits. They've already bought the permits to build. They've already done every hurdle possible. Now, we just need to get a contractor and get this settled with the state, so. But anyhow, either way, it's gonna take more time, and that's what this agreement is tonight, is just to extend that purchasing agreement until the January date to give them more time to finalize all of those items. So, with that said, I guess I'll open it up to the council if you have any questions.
So, with doing the vapor barrier work or, you know, any other necessary requirements by the state, we're responsible for that?
So, on this last characteristic study, what I found out was PSI not only did the characteristic study, but when they drew, bored the holes down into the site, they left them and they encased the wells. So, that way, the state, if they have requirements for us to continue testing those to make sure that there was no contamination, they'd be able to easily access that. So, that was part of our testing that was done. So, what they're looking at is requirements such as vapor barrier, not digging below eight feet deep and disturbing that contamination, not using the groundwater, which could, might be contaminated, those kind of requirements is what we'll have to have. So, their proposal is they'll have those documents that they'll submit to the state saying, okay, if we do this project, we're not gonna do this, 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 and this, and we're gonna get a vapor barrier to make sure nothing comes up from the ground to harm the public. And they believe that if we do all of those requirements and set those as stipulations that the state may, or hopefully, will okay that to move forward.
Reason I'm asking is in the event that, you know, if we continue to go forward and do that work to get that vapor barrier put into place, it increases the value of the property, because now it's still prime property on Main Street, you know, and then having all that work done and completed.
Right. And for the city, so the vapor barrier will be right below their foundation, so the builders will put that down right before they put the foundation down. So, we won't have to do that as a city. We just have to get the okay with the requirements from the state. So, if RB Colorado does decide that this is too big of a project for them, then yes, we still own the property. We have it ready. We've already jumped through all the hurdles. We already know what the state's gonna require, so at that point, I'll go out with, work with Rob and work with our staff and work with Pep or whoever, and we'll start trying to find somebody else, whether it's a Wendy's or a, whatever it may be. We'll start going out and searching for somebody else. But my hope is that they've invested enough and we've invested enough that we can just keep it moving forward, so. Because somebody else is gonna have to start from ground one, which they've already done all of that, so. Does that answer your questions, or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, my biggest part is just making it, you know, that ready, I guess, you know, in the sense of sale-ready.
Yeah.
You know, if it requires for us to do anything on our end, I, you know, my hope is that we just go out and do it, so that way, we're not fighting all over again trying to get more, you know, somebody else having to start from zero. We're saying, no, it's, you know, it's sale-ready, it's building-ready, it's just, you know, everything's been done. The state required this, that's been done. There's all the documentation on it. It's ready to build.
So, that's, yeah, that's where we'll be at. Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna ask during the comment, but I didn't have this information. So, Plan A falls through, Plan B, is there a Plan B? What types of businesses or buildings can be developed if the state does not approve RVs or that type of business?
Well, I think the state will either approve or deny building on the property itself with the, so that's not an issue. It's not specific to RVs. It's just, if RV's supposed to back you out, it's because of the dollar amount, the investment that it's gonna be. It will open the property up. It's a commercial property on Main Street with a frontage, so we could put manufacturing, we could put another fast food, we could put lots of different things. It's a full acre, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for us to remarket it someplace else, so.
So, if the state doesn't approve to build on it, what will happen?
So, the only thing that state would do if not is they'll have requirements for us to clean it up in a certain way or make certain modifications. So, it's not, it's not the situation where they're gonna block you from ever building on it, the situation of they're gonna need us to do these certain things.
An increasing set of requirements to make it, yeah.
Right. To make it develop.
Right.
To be able to do it.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Rob or Kristen or anybody want to add anything, or Lance?
Just, I have reviewed the agreement. I have no issue with extending it to the January 13 deadline date that they put in there. I did want to remove that last sentence of that, number one, just because I don't want it to specifically stay in there regarding earnest money being returned back. I think that may be an option if, under their original contract, but I don't feel that it being submitted.
Yeah, I think their concern in the email was that they wanted to make sure if it didn't pass tonight, that they would have the opportunity to...
Yeah, and I didn't...
But I didn't think that would be a problem.
And I didn't comment back to her till we get it approved, if it gets approved.
Okay.
Is January the 13th enough time for the state review to come back on? Is there an estimate of time on that?
What the PSI representative told me is that they should have the report to us by the end of today, tomorrow. We'll review it and send it back, and they will submit it to the state. They believe within 30 days, they should have a response back from the state. So, are you wanting to extend it from January 13th to...
That's what I'm kinda questioning, if January 13th's actually enough time, we have to go through this all again. I mean, can it be just January 31st that gives the state?
I don't have a problem with that, but...
That's my only question, and we'll be right back here again on January 13th.
Yep.
I mean, if we're all in, we're all in, so we just need to ride this ship and not...
Yeah. What do you think, Lance?
Well, we're gonna have another meeting in January before then anyway, so we will know if that meeting, whether we need to...
And I did, in our, my communication, I did let them know that our next meeting in January was January 9th, so if they had a desire to extend that timeline, then we'd have to know before that time, so we could get it onto the council agenda.
Okay. I'd say we leave it that way. We don't need to go back and forth with their attorney if they're, they've already approved this one.
And they, we did receive this from them, so this is what they said.
The dates they picked.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Move, we approve.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the agreement. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is item number eight, review rates and fee changes for 2023. This is the time of the year when we look over our rate structures and get that submitted to the council. Rob and Kristen, would you like to speak on this?
Well, I will say that it doesn't include any water rate study yet because of, you know, our water, our comprehensive plan has not been presented and accepted yet, so we don't know exactly how much money we're gonna have to get to pay for those. So, I don't, I believe it's about the only thing I'd like to add to it.
That's all I was gonna say, too, is we may need to come back for an amendment.
I'm sorry?
We might need to come back for an amendment once we look at the water study, rate study.
For the weight, Rod, water weights, okay.
That's the only thing I can think of.
But we can do that as a separate item, right?
Yeah, later on, when we have more information.
Okay, council, do you have any questions?
I have a question. I noticed two items under the, down three quarters, it says Lamar Library, Lamar Fireworks Fund, and then right below that, Lamar Police Explorer Fee. Is that, what is the explorer fee, is that?
That's, that's a fee in municipal court.
Oh, okay.
So, that, it's not a...
I was thinking something different, but, yeah.
Yeah, no, so that's just for municipal.
Okay. And that answers that question. Then, in Lamar Fire and Fireworks Fund lumped together, what's...
Same thing, so, there's a surcharge that goes into the municipal court.
Okay.
And I just, it's a donation to the fireworks fund.
Okay.
So, court, okay, court costs, basically. All three of those are for municipal court.
Okay. It all goes together, thank you.
Absolutely.
And you might make a note of that for next year, is kinda separate that out as court fees or something like, is that possible?
Sure.
Just to clarify. It's a minor thing, I just thought I mentioned.
We can do it this year. We can make that change this year if you want it.
Okay. Might just help to clarify it for public.
Yep.
They look at it. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, the, give me a second. Just lost it.
Looks like we had an increase on the use in Asia. Scum trap deposits per week, or per use is now $5 per week?
Right, so, we were having trouble getting them back.
Okay.
It was, they would pay the, and it was just a deposit. We get them back, they're broken or whatever it is. This is a way that we can keep, and they're always, somebody's always needing another one. But this, we can then buy new ones. We should have more available this way. If we charge $5 per week, people can keep them for a week and bring them back, and keep them for a month, pay the $20 and keep them for a month. It's just, I think it's gonna be more self-sufficient with, with it doing at this one.
Do you think $5 a week is enough?
I do. We bought one, it was, I believe, $70. So, it's not gonna take too long before we can purchase another one.
Okay.
And we're gonna test it out this year, and if it's not, then next year, we can increase it a little bit if we need to. But I, I'm talking with the shelter manager, I think $5 a week could be sufficient.
Okay. Mike, did you find your question?
Yes, I did. Thank you for stalling for me. The administrative fee, I knew it was something very important in my mind. I thought we'd gone over increasing the rates of city cleanup, equipment, manpower, and it looks like there was no change in the cost. Is that correct, or am I not correct? That'd be a Pat Mason thing, I believe.
Yeah. Are we raising the rates in the sanitation or wastewater? Works these.
I think he's talking about when we were looking at the equipment and what we were charging per hour and our man-hours because our hourly rates have gone up.
According to this, it says city cleanup fee plus equipment and manpower, and I'm taking that as...
Added to...
As what we were charging to go out and mow people's yards and things like that, right?
Correct.
And I thought we were gonna increase that. Is this the increase? Because I'm not seeing that it was increased in here.
Well, see, the rates are different on this one. This is just the fee for the administration of those.
Right, so, so, if we have to go mow somebody's yard, they automatically have to pay the $250 plus the man-hours.
That we increased.
And that we increased last year.
Oh, so, it wouldn't be in this one, it would've been in the previous year?
Correct, and you guys approved that last year.
Okay.
So, but they automatically get charged that $250 plus whatever expense it takes.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got it now.
All right, any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second. Here we have a motion and a second to approve the rates and fees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 221101, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lamar, Colorado, approving an agreement to waive the liens attached to real property located at 601, 603, and 601 and a half, and 603 and a half, North 7th Street in Lamar, Colorado. This is initiated by the city clerk and city administrator. Would you like to speak on that?
Don't me to take it?
Yeah, and then I will agree.
Okay. So, several years back, we got approval from council that we could negotiate properties that we had filed liens against. Those type of properties, people had walked away from, so they were back taxes that weren't taking care of the properties. We've had to go in and mow them multiple times a year, board up houses. On this particular property, there was an old house shed barn, I really, I don't even remember. Anyway, structure. We had to have, it was checked for asbestos, they did it asbestos removal, and then we tore the house down. I believe that was back in 2011. Over the years, we've mowed it several times. Well, we've had two interested parties, as I stated in the, in the commentary, we've had two interested parties. So, I went through, pulled out the actual fees that it cost our employees to go out and mow, reduced the asbestos check down to $2,000, so that comes out to the $4,354.50. That was presented in a letter to the two interested parties. I haven't heard back from one of the parties at all, but Mr. Garcia has made a counteroffer of $2,500. And at this point...
He's been very persistent.
He has been very persistent. He has been in here a couple of times a week, all summer long.
Are these four full-size lots?
They, they are not.
Not.
So it is, it's, it looks like a lot, six oh one, six oh three, and then the halves. But if you, if you truly go over to the property, it is about a half a lot.
Half a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's not real big, so I can, can describe where it's at. It's on the corner of, um, West Washington and North Seventh Street. Um, right by, um, an electric.
Yeah.
Yes, right by a drain, there's a drainage, um, station.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a road, and then there's this property.
And this property is cleared off now because we've evaded it, is that correct? Or is there still a structure?
No, there's no structures on this property at all.
Good.
Mister, Mister Garcia has the property that is on the, the north of it.
Okay.
And his purpose would, he would like to extend his own property and, and not necessarily develop it, but clean it up. Instead of the city going, there's a tree on it that has fallen on his house and.
He is connected to it, so he has.
He would like to be able to remove that.
Who has the deed of the property now?
Um, the deed is, well, there's treasurer's deeds on it, so the county does.
The county does.
So and Mister, whomever would have to provide me proof that he has went to the county and paid the back taxes on the property. If you notice that there was, um, an attachment that he would, um, a conditional agreement that he would have to sign, who would have to make sure that the property was maintained for the next six years, that we would not have to go and mow it, do anything with it, or those full liens would be placed back on the property.
It is hot in here.
Okay.
That's why nobody can breathe in where I'll cough in the back.
Okay. Well, any other questions from the council?
So just on the, on that agreement that you have on there, it says six years on paragraph four, but then it says ten years on paragraph five.
Yeah. So I guess between six and ten, we can still refile if we want to, to have all of those reinstated.
I think that was the purpose behind it.
Yeah.
Garth, and, and you can help me rewrite this, um, our previous attorney's, the one who wrote this up for us.
I just like it to be the same year, whatever.
I don't have a problem with it.
Does anybody know the zoning of this property?
It's residential.
It's a residential.
It's, it's not mobile home, right?
No.
Okay.
Okay, well, what would the council's pleasure?
I move we accept the offer.
I agree, I mean, based on nothing being done with the property, it's just sitting there.
Exactly.
Why not let and do something with it?
Yes.
Let's just get it done.
That's exactly right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes.
So is that a motion or is it a?
Yes, that'd be a motion.
Second, Ted.
Um, Joe already said.
Oh, Joe already said.
Well, do you want to go ahead and, and say that to change that one to make it match to six years? I'm sorry to interrupt, I just didn't want you to have to go through the whole thing again.
Amend your motion to.
To make number four, the six years, match to number five, and we'll change it to six years instead of ten years.
Paragraph four and five both need to read six years.
So that is your amended motion.
Yes, sir.
Are you good with the amendment, Joe?
Yes, I am.
Okay, well, so we have the motion in a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of.
All right. Resolution twenty-two eleven oh two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lamar, Colorado, setting the interest rate paid on customer utility deposits. This is initiated by the city clerk. Lindell, let's speak on that.
Okay, so, um, we pay interest out on everybody's utility deposit, deposits, both electric and water. So, and that is driven from P U C. So this year, P U C has increased their interest rate from point oh eight to one point six nine percent.
Yes.
I just need.
So no.
To approve of the resolution.
I make the motion, we accept the resolution, number twenty-two dash eleven dash zero two.
Can you make that a second?
Henry motion first. So he has a second.
I'll make a second.
Right, you have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of.
Agenda item number eleven is an ordinance of the City of Lamar, Colorado amending certain sections of the Lamar Municipal Code to regulate camping on property owned or managed by the City of Lamar. This is initiated by Chief Miller. Chief?
So we recently figured out that the way that we regulate our parks or people in our parks or camping in our parks is by curfew. We have no way to regulate city-owned property outside of the parks. Um, so anyone wants to go down on Willow Creek and set up a tent, there's nothing we can do about it. So this is a way to try to fix that. Um, not regulating or restricting camping or saying nobody can camp down there. It's, there's a process for them to have to follow in order to do so. Um, so we're not, we're not saying because you're, you're down on your luck, um, you don't have an option. We're, we're saying that we want to regulate how that is done and where it is done. So that's the purpose behind this ordinance.
This is similar to many cities who have urban camping ordinances where they're camping inside the city limits or.
Right, and this is much less restrictive than those even.
Okay.
Um, a lot of those are no camping at all or only camping here or there. And, and what I don't want to do is we have the Lamarlands come in, we have the windmill tournament, and people come in and have a great time. They can defray some of the costs of coming down here, they can still camp in the park. Um, it's not restricting that, you can camp for up to three days in one location. Um, so I think that our windmill class will still be fine, the, uh, Lamarland's Invitational will still be good. Um, it, it's just a way to.
Those all get approved through the council.
Correct. Um, the way this is written, it would be approved by the city administrator, um, so that we're not having to bring every little thing up before you guys. And I think it just, it, it makes the process much smoother, much cleaner to have one point of contact, um, for them to get approval for.
So I, I read it and I thought maybe it's not humanly possible that you would be able to approve every time, every, anybody wants to ask for camping permit. So I would suggest maybe the city administrator or his designee. So it gives you a little freedom in case you're camping somewhere else.
Oh, that's true.
You know, like you're gone and somebody wants to, that would give them a little bit of freedom.
That's the main reason why I didn't want to have to come back to you guys each time to make that kind of decision. So I, I would like that and then I would probably make Kyle my designee.
Perfect.
I concur.
Or people could just start planning ahead, you know?
Yeah.
And that, that's always the.
Packets we get on Friday at noon or one o'clock.
So we would need to amend one A to say city administrator or designate and/or designate. Is that right? Or just in designate or, or designate?
Or designate.
Well, I want to be able to have some way of putting it to where those, you know, you can send it off, but I really think you need to have the final approval on this.
Right.
So that way we don't have just officers that you said, okay, and they're just signing them off without you knowing it.
He would have to approve his designate.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I just want to make sure that there's a check and balances there so we don't have. Yeah.
I got one question here and it just occurred to me after I read it earlier. What about those people just kind of passing through town and want to set up for, for one night? Does that, am I missing that in here?
Nope, they can come in and get permission to do that.
Okay, so in other words, at like eight o'clock at night, you're, he says you might be a designate.
I bet that I would get those phone calls in the middle of the night.
And I'm probably going to put it on the app and let people understand that if they want camping in town, that they will be.
Here's my personal cell phone number.
So what you're saying is people can get a permit to camp in the, uh, community building parking lot now?
They could, it has to be approved.
Is it likely? Probably not, but is it possible? Yes, if they want to live life for it.
A couple of years ago, we had the bike.
The pedals and the planes?
Planes, yes, and they camped over there.
We used to have the, uh, relay for life and they'd camp in the stadium.
Right, which is the school district, but it's the same, same process, you know? It, is it a possibility? Yes, is it going to happen every night? Probably not.
I was thinking for, uh, usually like when I travel south of town early in the mornings, I'll see people that pulled into the, um, west area right there by the boat parks.
Yep.
I never think so.
They're not supposed to be in there.
Yeah, I figured that's a park, but yeah, I do see it happening.
Yep, yep.
Well, we've also had semis pull into North Gateway Park and try to stay there overnight. I mean, it just, so it varies in what you consider camping if they're, does that make a difference if they're pulled over on the side of the street?
The park curfew would still be in effect.
Right.
So they stopped up permission about like the park curfew, even if they're just saying, hey, I just pulled over for the, you know, get a bite to eat, and they're in North Gateway Park. It can't be there after curfew.
Right.
Um, so side of the street, this isn't regulated, side of the street. So if a truck driver pulls up on the side of the street and is going to take a nap, that's not regulated, there's parking regulations for that. Um, but as far as camping on the front lot of the city complex, the front lawn, right now, there's nothing we could do.
Is there enough bite in this to legally accomplish what we need to accomplish?
That was the whole intent.
Right, yes.
So there is enough.
I think it's possible.
You didn't get any permission to do it, you can't do it.
Yeah, it says it's unlawful for any person, so that's all that we need in it.
Okay, so it is an ordinance. Of course, as an ordinance, there is a first reading and a second reading. The first reading has to be done out loud. Does anybody want to do that or do you want me to do it real quick? How would you want to read this? Henry?
Sure.
Okay, you've been quiet tonight, so.
An ordinance of the City of Lamar, uh, Colorado amending certain sections of the Lamar Municipal Code to regulate camping on property owned or managed by the City of Lamar. Whereas the City of Lamar encourages the citizens to utilize the parks and open spaces in the City of Lamar. And whereas property owned and maintained by the City of Lamar is intended for the use of all citizens. And whereas the City of Lamar requires individuals wishing to camp on any city-owned or maintained property to first receive the proper authorization. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of, City Council of the City of Lamar, Colorado as follows. Part one, the Lamar Colorado Municipal Code is hereby amended by the addition of a section to be numbered chapter twenty, article three, section twenty dash seventy-five, which reads as follows. Camp, uh, twenty dash seventy-five camping definitions. A, camp or camping means establishing temporary, part-time, full-time, or permanent occupancy in camping unit and unpermitted struc- structure or a structure not permitted, permitted as a dwelling unit, whether or, whether for recreational or other purposes and the construction, uh, presence, maintenance, or storage of such camping units and structures. Two, sleeping or making preparations to sleep, including lying down of bedding or making shelter for the purpose of sleeping. Three, occupying any structure that is being or may be used for camping and associated activities, including recreational or other vehicles, motorhomes, campers, trailers, fences, tents, shacks, sleeping bags, storage containers, sheds, and other structure or outdoor materials or buildings, and storage of camping equipment or supplies. Part two, the Lamar Municipal, Colorado Municipal Code is hereby amended by the addition of a section to be numbered chapter twenty, article three, section twenty dash seventy-six, which reads as follows. Twenty dash seventy-six camping restrictions. Number one, it is unlawful for any camp, uh, person to camp as that term is described in twenty dash seventy-five on any city-owned or maintained property without receiving written authorization from the city administrator or his designate. A, written authorization camp by the city administrator shall not exceed three days at one location. And B, no person shall receive authorization to utilize any building or structure owned or maintained by the City of Lamar for camping. Two, it is unlawful for any person to camp upon private property without first receiving written authorization for, from the owner or owner's agent. Should any part of this ordinance be declared invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder shall remain in full force in effect. This ordinance is necessary for the protection of the public health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the said city of Lamar, Colorado.
Okay. So for those of you who are watching and those of the audience, um, an ordinance is basically a new addition to our laws. Um, so it's a little different. We do read the ordinances in full reading in open public. Uh, we will publish it for everybody to read and read through between now and the next meeting. And then we'll do the second reading in the next meeting as well. And during that second meeting, they will, uh, will either approve it or deny it at the second reading. If you do have questions or concerns, uh, in between now and then, please read through it. It'll be published as I stated, and you'll have an opportunity to make your comments before then. So with that said, it has been read on its first reading, what is the council's pleasure? Do you like to pass that on first reading?
I'm actually pass it on first reading.
We have a second. Second. Motion in a second to pass it on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Do we have any miscellaneous items to discuss or questions to answer?
I have one, um, request that I, I'm going to add it to our executive session, but it's an economic development thing. So it will just be a discussion and no, no decision will be made, but it's for, yeah, negotiation purpose.
Okay. All right, any other miscellaneous items to discuss for the council? Anybody? Seeing none, we will move on. The next item on the agenda is an executive session. The executive session, there are three parts to it. One is to discussion of the personnel matter under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two, subsection four, subsection F. Number two is for the purposes of determining positions relative of matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing a strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two, subsection four, subsection A. And three, for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two, parentheses for, parentheses B. Our next city council meeting will be on Monday, November the twenty-eighth at seven P M. So do we want to move into an executive session? Doesn't look like there'll be any, uh, motions or decisions coming out of the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of.
Okay, motion passes. As I mentioned before, our next city council meeting will be on Monday, November the twenty-eighth at seven P M. Um, we thank you for attending our meeting tonight or watching it online, and we look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you.